Okay, zoning board review is now in session. I'll have a roll call in terms of the members that are present. Mr. Waddeke, present. Sarwitz, present. Mr. Repose, present. Mr. Farrell, present. John Borden, vice chair, present. Okay. We have minutes from June 17th and September 16th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, approved. The chairman's report. The chairman would like to report that unfortunately, the last position on the zoning board has not been, has not been filed, and there are no alternates. And my plan is to write a letter to the editor to ask the citizen support group to step up and try to volunteer for this board. If anyone in the audience is interested, we would welcome any and all participants to apply to the position. Without the other alternate, it's sometimes very problematic to have a forum. And I would again encourage anyone that's interested to afford. Old business. First item on the old business agenda is Christopher and Deborah Burnett, for a special use permit to construct a small solar energy system.
Joseph Hook, on behalf of Christopher Burnett.
Okay. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Joseph Hook, 294 War Valley Road, Middletown, Ohio. On behalf of Christopher Burnett. My client has asked if this matter be withdrawn, and I, on behalf of my client, I'm asking that his application be withdrawn without prejudice.
Is there a motion to withdraw petition without prejudice? A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Your motion is accepted, withdraw without prejudice. Thank you. The next petition is by Mark E. Lett, trustee, and Bradford C. and Marcher C. Gray, of Palan's Decision, Department of Building and Zoning Officer.
We don't have a forum for this item, so it's going to have to continue here.
Okay, Mrs. Chappell, you stood up, you want to speak on this matter or not?
No.
Alright, so is a motion in order to continue this petition to November? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Petition is continued to our November meeting. Third item under old business is Court General Appleton, seeking special use permit to change for existing non-conformant daycare to a banking office. Mrs. Chappell, that petition is being withdrawn. Withdrawn completely?
You can make it without prejudice, or with prejudice. Without prejudice, People's Credit Union is no longer interested. Turns off the lights.
So is there a motion to withdraw this petition without prejudice?
You may want to continue it to the next meeting and then withdraw. It was on the record from last month that we were going to continue it to November. I put it on the agenda mistakenly.
I happen to be here. That's what we're doing next month as well. Well, I just want to, if someone based on last meeting felt that he, what does that mean? What have we heard on this? I think it's prudent just to wait for all the next month. There was a motion made and approved to continue to November.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Solicitor. Motion to continue to November? Second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Continue. Okay. New business. Michael and Sandra Moriarty. Can you state your name and address for our recording segment?
Michael Moriarty, 64th Avenue Street.
And do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Tell us what you'd like to do.
Well, we have three items on the list, and two are-
Two could speak into the mic, sorry. Thank you.
There are three items on the list. Two for, for lack of terms, is that I think of the past. The current issue, requesting to build a deck on the second floor on the front of our house, and it's, I don't even think it's a inch too close to the street.
Second, speak up just a little bit.
I'm sorry. We are requesting a setback of 93% of the house from the street to, yeah. The second, okay, the second issue was the deck on the first floor. The original footprint of the deck, when my house was built in 1970, should have had a variance, but it never did. That deteriorated, and it's partly due to maintenance, to go the pressure treatment and running stuff. The stairs on the front of that, on the deck, across the front of the driveway, and they didn't, weren't very functional or aesthetically pleasing. So I was replacing the deck in my point of stairs to the street. So that's second.
Board members, any questions on the petition?
Just one certain, yes. The third issue is we've had an underground pool in the backyard since 1987, and when we applied for the upper deck variance, Michael B. is the owner of the pool there. That's, those are-
Board members, any other questions? Okay. So it appears as though that a lot of these conditions have existed since 2003, that even preused that, and here's, so it's just an oversight of the property. Are just giving a variance. Are any of butters or interested parties that like this? Okay, I also have to ask you, because your lot is a substantial amount of record, we need to ask you additional questions. The adequate space provided for fire protection?
I'm not sure, would you clarify that?
Well, in terms of, if we were to grant this variance, is there adequate space for fire protection to access the rear yard in case of an emergency? Okay, okay, thank you. Would it provide adequate light and air between the buildings? Would it alter the character of the neighborhood if it were approved or adversely affect the neighboring property? Lot coverage and setbacks, less than the average lot coverage and setbacks on adjacent properties?
I'm on a corner lot, we're on a corner lot. The house, this is the garage next door on a 30 by 80 block, and two car garage, but the cars are empty. It was a very long and narrow garage.
In terms of the existing conditions, it's been like this for how long?
My, my client lot?
Yes, yes.
The pool's been there since 87, upstairs over 2013.
If this were approved, it's not going to alter the character of the neighborhood as it exists right now?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Would it impose a substantial detriment to the public or to immediate neighbors?
None.
Alright, thank you. Okay. Board members, are we ready to vote? Mr. Farrell.
This chairman. We have three dimensional variances. So I could handle them all at once.
Yes.
I vote to approve all the dimensional variants. Yeah, but it's satisfactorily considered the criteria A to E for a substantial amount of record dimensional variance. Two issues have been in place for years, and so, so we're not altering the neighborhood in that regard. The third item is the upstairs deck, which doesn't extend further than the stairs. So, so the structure as a whole isn't getting, has no detrimental impact to the neighborhood.
Sarwitz. Mr. Repose. Again, special use permit? Yes. Substandard lot of record.
So I also vote to approve the standard, the special use permit, substantial lot of record. The structure is increasing lot coverage while greater than 2% required. It's reasonable, given that the lot is just under 5,000 square feet in size, and that's a key business.
Sarwitz.
I, I support the variances as stated.
Mr. Repose.
Approve all three dimensional variances as well as the special use.
Mr. Waddeke, I approve also the reasons previously stated. The chairman also approves, for reasons previously stated, the petitioner has existing lot coverage of 26.34%, and is only proposing to increase the lot coverage by 1.51%. Given the fact that the lot is only 4,937 square feet, the petitioner has a hardship of managing more than American beans to try to comply with the setbacks and a lot of coverage, given the size of this lot. So I vote to approve. Petition is being approved, thank you. Next petition on the agenda is Lindsay, hopefully I don't screw this up, Castor Genie Littlefield, for dimensional variances for a front yard setback, constructive storage outside the rear yard. Is she here?
I'm on video, yes.
Okay. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Hold up one moment, I'm gonna get out my top. Hi, sorry, we just started.
Oh, that's okay. If this was staged, we're really impressed. They're cute.
Okay, sorry. Okay, I'm with you.
Okay, so please raise your right hand and swear to tell the truth and state your name and address for the record.
I swear to tell the truth. My name is Lindsay Castor Genie Littlefield at 8 Harvards Drive, Portsmouth, Rhode Island, 02871.
Okay, tell us what you'd like to do.
I would like to build a shed to, right to the left of the garage. So it would essentially be my house, the garage, and then a shed, a budding right up next to the garage.
Okay. I drove by the property today, and it looks like it's partially constructed.
Right, I was, yeah, I was, I was under a misunderstanding that I was able to do this without a variance, and found out later that, no, I needed a variance. So I stopped everything at that point and contacted the town, and which led me here to do things the way I'm supposed to be, which I thought I was doing from the beginning, but I'm a few feet closer to the stone wall than I'm supposed to be, which is the one variance I'm asking for, and I'm also to the side of my garage, whereas apparently I was supposed to be in the back of the property, which I misunderstood as well. So that's the second variance I'm asking for.
Okay. Board members, any questions? So I'm going to ask for butters or interested parties first before I raise a couple other questions that I have. Are there any of butters or interested parties that wish to speak to this petition? Mr. Scholl, my guess is that there is no one that wishes to speak to this petition.
So if you're on Zoom, if you use the Raystand function or dial star, star nine, give a comment.
Yeah. Okay, so I would just raise the question that sheds should normally be in the rear yard. It requires a dimensional variance to be in either the side yard or the front yard. In this particular case, having driven by the property, it appears as though it's almost attached to the structure. It's a three car garage existing, and it appears as though, I'm sure it will be aesthetically pleasing. And even though it's classified as a quote-unquote "storage shed", it would be an attachment to the single family as well. Is that correct?
It's not going to be fully attached. It is a budding right up next to it so that it appears aesthetically pleasing to the eye. I'm going to use the same siding and trim styling that I used on the house so that it does not look like a rundown storage shed. I do want it to look very nice and cohesive with the house. So it is going to be right up next to it, but it's not going to be, it's not going to be built to the house. It's going to be built right next to it, very, very close, though.
Okay. Board members, any questions? No questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Repose.
So that's the only spot, if we're based on the field, or can it go back closer to the front yard setback aside from, where it's more out of view from?
So the, the trouble I'm having with putting it in the back of the yard are a couple issues. One being that I would have to take down trees because there are trees on either side of my property line that don't allow me to just drive from the front to the back, and I do need to be able to access the shed with a truck. I'll explain why in a moment. The second reason is there is septic pipes going through the back of my yard that I don't want to drive over. The storage shed will be for, I mean, some for my children's bikes and things, but a lot for my husband's fishing equipment. He is a fisherman, that's what he does to support our family. So he leaves at 4:00 a.m., he comes home at 9:00 p.m., and loads and unloads fishing rods and all of his gear from his truck where he needs light. He needs to be able to drive his truck right up to it in the early morning and late night. And he can't drive to the back of the yard from the front without going into the neighbor's property and driving over their yard to get to the back.
Any other questions? Good? Yeah, I guess. Okay. All right, are we, do you have anything else to add to this petition before we vote?
Um, I just want to add that I'm not, I'm asking for a couple feet next to the stone wall that abuts East Main Road. It's not interfering on anybody else's property to that side of me, whereas they would, you know, feel like they were too close to my house at that point. And it's not going to look aesthetically poor for the neighborhood. It'll fit right into the house. And there's really no other property, place on my property that I could put this, and it is very much needed for my husband's business.
All right. Mr. Scholl, just to clarify. The variance is being requested is for the shed to be outside of the rear yard, and there are no other side yard setback relief?
There's a front yard setback relief.
Right, it's on East Main Road, so that is what I'm told. That's kind of counted as a front setback because it's on a main road from that side, which is 19 and a half.
I think your address is Harvards Drive, so that determines your front yard?
Okay, so that's like 50 and a half feet. I'm not, I'm plenty.
Okay, good, good point. Well, let's let the assistant butters speak on this.
So it's front yard on the, pretty hard point zone.
Yes.
Yeah, 32.
Because I don't see a dimensional variance request sheet in the petition.
Yeah, it should be there, it's not. So they're requesting a 10 and a half foot variance.
Okay, so board members, it's a 10 point, 10 and a half foot variance for front yard?
It's, it's technically the front yard, but it's actually the side yard. It goes up to a stone wall, which is then about-
We, we understand.
Okay.
Thank you, I drove by the property today. Okay, so the petitioner, the only relief the petitioner is seeking is, one, to have a storage shed inside yard, and two, a front yard variance of 10.5 feet. Is that correct? Okay. Board members, are we ready to vote? Just to make sure I understand, the this drawing shows 19. Yes, I think, I think the relief was to the front yard?
The, from the, from Harvards, the shed will be set back about 50 and a half feet from the, from the stone wall by East Main Road. It'll be set back 19 and a half feet, and that's not from East Main, that's from the stone wall.
No, you, you need that requirement. There is no relief necessary to the side yard setback. The question is- I'm sorry?
It's not a side yard.
But because it abuts East Main, it's referred to as a front yard.
Oh, that's a really good point. Thank you for pointing that out. All right. So actually, 19, so 30 minus 19?
11.
Is 11. So you need an 11 foot variance to East Main Road, and you also need a 10.5 foot variance to Harvards Drive.
No, 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 I don't need a variance to Harvards Drive. I just need the 19 now.
No, the other variance is that the shed's not in the rear yard.
Okay, all right, so we're good. All right, so there's two release requests. Variants or setbacks, and whether or not the shed is allowed in the side yard.
Correct.
Okay, are we ready? Thank you, board, for your support. Mr. Farrell.
Mr. Chairman, I will address the two variance requests separately, but I do approve of both. For the case of the front yard setback, the shed is sized such that if it wasn't where it was placed, it would be okay as a matter of right. So, so the only issue is where it's being placed. As the applicant has pointed out, the side yards from the side of the house to East Main Road covers a distance from the, from the home to the, to the stone wall. And then there's another 15 or 20 feet out to East Main Road. So placing the shed in this location has no detrimental effect to any butters because there's no one out there. And from East Main Road, it's difficult, if not impossible, to see the shed because of the tree. So, so, so I consider this to be an easy guess. The shed can go where it is without encroaching, without encroaching from a practical perspective on anybody else. In terms of placing the shed in the side yard or in the front yard in this case, instead of the rear yard, I also approve that variance for the reasons stated by, is, sorry, I'm going to cast Castor Genie dash-
Castor Genie Littlefield, yeah.
Littlefield, who has testified that the mature trees in the backyard and the leach field inhibit the ability to place a shed there that would be accessible to her husband in order to store equipment that he can't safely store in his vehicle. So for those reasons, I approve both dimensional variances. Mr. Sarwitz.
I approve both very insightful reasons previously stated.
Mr. Repose. To approve the dimensional variance, speaking of the nine, the shed, it's a dimensional there. Correct, that'll be the least relief necessary. I think there's plenty of room to drive around the property and get to the back. And there is also through the garage, so I mean, it's a least there could be a base to go about it, but I understand it, you have two front yards.
Mr. Waddeke. I vote to approve both. The chairman has mixed feelings about this. Mr. Repose brings up some very valid points with the three car garage. Whether or not you need to build a storage shed inside.
I can understand that being thought of.
Excuse me, you can't, you can't speak while I'm voting.
I apologize.
All right, that's fine. The petition has lot coverage of 10%, and that's probably why I'm reluctantly going to vote to approve because I think you have the right to use your property. And if this petition were for a storage shed in the front yard, I would absolutely deny. But because it appears as though it's going to be attached, even though it won't be, to the primary structure, I feel as though to deny would amount you the right to fully utilize all your property at 10% lot coverage. Mr. Repose brings out some very good points, but I vote to approve. Bring uh, brings out some very good points, but I vote to approve. Your petition has been approved.
Thank you, I appreciate it very much.
Next item on the agenda. Frederick Cornell. Mr. Cornell is seeking dimensional variances for a primary setback and lot coverage. Construct a second storage shed outside the rear yard. And not forming a lot of record um, on Prudence Island. State your name and address for the record.
Frederick Cornell, uh, zero two two four Avenue Two Silent, and I am a resident of Prudence Island.
And please raise your right hand and swear to tell the truth.
I swear to the public.
Thank you. Tell us what you'd like to do.
I'd like to put a shed in the front yard of my property. According to what I have for the rest of the property, um, I see no other place that I can put it. I don't have room in the back of the house. I don't have room on either side of the house. Um, presently, I rent a garage to store equipment in. While I'm always generating so forth, so forth, and so on. And that basis ending the end of the year, I will have no place to store anything. Um, I don't have a basement, I don't have a cellar, I don't have a garage. I really have no other place to put anything. I also made woodworker. And part of this shed would be my woodworking area where I could walk into my woodworking.
So um, my first question is, why can't you put your additional shed in the backyard next to your existing shed?
I don't believe the tomb that you can have shed in the house.
Well, when I look at the site plan. I guess um. The board very rarely sees sheds in the front yard. And side yard, we just granted the side yard variance. But front yard is a little problematic.
I understand that.
So my thought is, is there a way to figure out how to put the shed in the rear yard next to your existing shed? Or in the side yard?
Um, there's, there's no room in the side yard. Side yard is where the septic system.
Yeah, yeah, I'm looking at that. Yeah, go ahead.
In the other, in the other side, there isn't any room on the west side of the house to put anything else there.
So I, I guess my other question would be, can you add on to your existing shed in the rear yard?
Um, I don't know, I hadn't, I hadn't thought of doing that, um, just because of a landscaping and the. I, in order to get there, I'd have to go very, very close to the beach field if I was taking my lawnmower out or anything like that, and it'll be chill, it's right, all along beside the house there. It's very, very, very narrow area.
Board members, any questions? Yes, Mr. Farrell.
Mr. Cornell.
Yeah.
Uh, who also intends on, on housing a golf cart?
No, no. Did I put that in there?
Yeah, that was in the.
Oh, well, I know I don't.
Okay. I have a question. Mr. Mr. Repose, how many houses are in Prudence Island in general? Many have two sheds?
Oh, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, I know some do, so I'm sure.
Yeah, just curious if it's like a.
I mean, I would say yes, some, but how many, I haven't had any idea.
I guess you can move there with the sheds. With the house up against the water, it's just.
I, I mean, there's a, there's a shed on Polk Avenue now. But as you say, it's only because their property faces narrow ends avenue. So the shed therefore is on the sidewalk, but it's on Polk Avenue.
So, how was you? Was this a, a pre-made shed?
We, I haven't bought it, I haven't done anything. Yeah, it will be pre-made. Yes, and it'll be delivered to the avenue.
So what's the finish of it gonna be?
Uh, we're gonna finish it to look like the house, the house is shingled with blackwoods. And we'll have it, the outside will just be basically put in, and we'll finish it to match the house.
And you say there's no garage?
No.
So it's almost like a mini garage. Way to look at it, I think.
Well, yeah, except there'll be no, there'll be no motorized vehicles, right?
Yeah, I'm just saying, our concern is how it looks to have something in the front.
Doesn't have a garage, doesn't have a big present.
Only rooms um. It's a small, large, if I, if I rooms, kitchen, bed in the middle.
Can we put a condition on that the finishes to match the house?
Well, I, I think that. We can certainly do that, and then the question would be whether the petition is approved or denied. The condition would still be in place regardless of the decision. So I think we need to hear from the Butters and get to the point where we make a decision and the condition either way will be in place. Uh, is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, I think that covers it pretty much.
All right, so I'm gonna ask for Butters or interested parties to speak on this petition. Mr. Shaw, uh, there are no Butters. Board members, any other questions before um, we go to a vote? No, is there anyone that would like to propose any conditions to this petition?
I would propose.
Ms. Horwitz.
I would propose that the, the finishes on the shed match the house. So it's not like a metal shed, it's shingled with wood trim.
Is there a second to that condition? All those in favor?
I, I.
All right, okay, condition's been approved, and now we're ready to vote. Yes, actually, very good. Because your lot is seven thousand five hundred square feet in our twenty zone. I need to ask you um, whether you meet the substandard lot of record criteria under the zoning limits. There with you, one second. If this petition were approved, would it allow for adequate space for fire protection?
Yes.
And would it provide adequate light and air between the buildings?
Yes.
Result in the character of the neighborhood or adversely affect the neighboring properties?
No.
To create lot coverage setbacks less than the average lot coverage and setbacks of adjacent properties?
No.
Would it impose a substantial detriment to the public or to immediate neighbors?
No.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Farrell. The board ready to vote? Mr. Farrell.
Mr. Chairman, we have a special use permit for substandard lot of record and a dimensional variance.
That's correct.
There are three dimensional variances.
I'm sorry?
There are three dimensional variances.
One of them being a front yard setback to whole book cabinet?
Yeah. Being more than one shed and the other one being that is in front yard.
And Mr. Shaw.
Dimensional variances first. I, I understand Mr. Cornell's rationale for requiring an additional shed space. Given that he has a small home, no basement, no garage, and a ten by twelve shed perimeter. Given the shape of his yard, uh, and the testimony for it. Unable to place the shed in the side or rear of the house. Rear of the house because there's very little space, kind of house, aside because there is a beach field. So that front yard is the only place to put the shed. So, so. Dimensional variance for the front yard shed location is approved because there's no other place to put it. Dimensional variance for the second shed, I also approve in the back of storage space. Plus the seventy five hundred foot square foot lot size still gives us right around twenty. By around a twenty one percent. Thanks, special use permit and the special use permit, um, Mr. Cornell has addressed the. Cat, and the house. Or other homes that will be as close to the whole book as yours is, so. Thank you, uh, Mr. Repose. Special use permit for. Should not be in the rear yard. Sorry, I approved the special use permit, should not be in the rear yard, but. Thank you.
I approve both, but the special use permit and variances for me.
Mr. Wadde, you got it. I also approve.
The Chair has a problem with putting a shed in the front garage. For several reasons, one of which is set, setting a precedent, and two, I think that um, something else could be done to provide additional storage. I sympathize with the petitioner that he has no basement and um. And that's problematic for storage, but to put a shed in the front yard is a little problematic in my opinion. So I approve the special use permit, but I deny the variance for the front yard. Um, so your petition has been denied. You can um, resubmit your petition or alter the petition to the building inspector. Just confused, Eric, I thought Eric. There is voting to deny the dimensional variance, is that correct? So I voted to deny the dimensional variances as well. No, I, I voted to approve the special use permit. But I denied the variances specifically two, two sheds and a shed in the front yard. So um. Okay, thank you, thank you. Next petition on the agenda is Michael and Margaret Ferreira seeking dimensional variance to construct a single family dwelling. I'm not, not infringing the public's way. Mr. Chappelle, I have to say, if you take more than five minutes of my time. You will be unauthorized to enter this facility ever again.
Take less than that. I was hearing that. This is as simple as the petition should get. He has a lot. It requires no variances except for the simple dimensional variance he has in front. Article three, section P two, I believe it is, on both ways. The variance that we've had much all the time in Prudence and other areas where you have a lot that has. You can leave this thing off. It has valid access on a paper street, but that street is not yet.
The only question I have is whether or not the petitioner would be willing to get a letter from the fire department that the fire department can access that road in case of emergency for fire protection. I have called to the fire department, and actually I have to change it because when I first did it, it's zero maple. And now he has given me thirty eight Maple Avenue address, so I have to change the address. And he also went through the smoke detectors and sent me a bunch of. Is that Mark Reynolds?
Yes, yes, that was the first place I went to, not knowing too much about what to do. I went to Mark first, then I went to the.
So, bottom line is they have access to.
Yes.
And I think that access of maple, because the access comes across a paper street in North House Street. The fire department may ask for that driveway to be not eight feet wide, but ten feet wide.
Right, actually it would be fifteen feet wide.
I will comply and make sure that the fire department signs off on the width of the driveway and the quality.
So should we make that a condition?
I think they've already done it already, but if you make that a condition, we have no objection.
All right, okay.
The precedent wise, the conditions are.
Okay, uh, board members, any questions? Uh, Butters or interested parties? Okay, um, is there anyone that wants to propose a condition? Mr. Chairman, may I propose a condition that the driveway. I, I think the petitioner mentioned fifteen feet.
I think it should be rather than the actual width, which is required by the fire department.
Let me amend that proposal. Driveway leading to the hole. As wide as is required by the fire department to allow.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor of your condition?
Aye.
Fine, okay. I think we're ready to vote, um. Mr. Wadde, you got it.
I vote to approve for.
Thank you, um, Ms. Horwitz.
I vote to approve.
Is that the case?
Thank you. Mr. Repose, do I wanna say I vote to. Mr. Mr. Farrell, I vote to approve. This is stated by Mr. Repose. All right, uh, Chairman also votes to approve. This is kind of a no brainer. I mean, this is uh, dimensional variances for a lot, not infringing our public way. I hope it is after the comprehensive plan is approved and the zoning laws is amended. That some of these petitions go away. Uh, because I, I think to deny the petitioner the right to build on this land is clearly uh, more than a variant convenience, certainly a hardship. Chairman votes to approve your petition.
Thank you, less than five minutes. Before you write your letter, I sent a text out based on your comment. I have a couple applicants in the morning for your position. One may be related to Mr. Repose. You guys, brothers up there.
So should I write my letter or I?
I.
Write your letter, because it would longer have more.
Yeah, owners have more. But people are out to people, and they didn't know the situation.
Okay.
You told him it was paper. What's that paper?
Yes.
I told him all the way you require.
Yeah. Set up a hall. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second. Take the motion.
All right, is there a second to the motion? All those in favor? Aye.